Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 25th School Board Meeting. If you could please rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. In James' absence, Mike, would you mind taking attendance?
President McDonough.
Here.
Vice President Aldrich out. Secretary Summers out. Treasurer Whitney here. Trustee Gibson here. Trustee Adson.
Here.
Trustee Captain Jorni.
Here.
Thank you. Any changes to the board agenda? Okay. We'll go right into our school presentation for Crossroads.
Hello and good evening, everyone. How are you tonight? Good, good. Glad to hear it. I'm Don Masko, Principal at Crossroads. And it's really an honor and a privilege to be here this evening to talk about Crossroads. These are a few things that we're going to talk about this evening. The history and Camp Oakland partnership, our Crossroads staff, some recent updates and changes, a little bit about our students and their academic progress and some of the data that we use, and then a few points of pride that includes some of our initiatives that we've done with the students this fall, like field trips, Student of the Month, our staff wellness, and a little bit about our campus. So just a little bit of a history. Sure, most of you are aware, but Camp Oakland is right over on Drainer Road, about a quarter mile east of the Oxford Hills Country Club. It was founded in 1951. It's approximately 160 acres. It's a beautiful setting. In years past, there probably were more students than there are now, so there are a few buildings that are on campus that aren't actually occupied, but we do have a number of buildings that obviously are still occupied. Our mission is for adjudicated youth working towards community reintegration through emotional and psychological healing programs. We want to empower or risk youth to evaluate their own behavior and their actions. A lot of our students come from many different counties throughout the state. We have a young lady from Benton Harbor. We have students from Wayne County, Washtenaw County, Oakland County. So we have a variety of different students. And once they come to our, to the campus at Camp Oakland, they are our residents. They're residents here in Oxford, therefore they are students of ours. So they use our curriculum and our standards and our benchmarks and things like that that we use. In the year 2000, the community did a little collaboration with a nonprofit and opened Oxford Crossroads Day School. The nearly 8,000-square-foot school was constructed so our students would have a center campus to use. Now, today, there are two separate buildings. So there's a building for our female students and there's a building for our male students. And so myself and our staff will go in between the buildings to educate the students. We're committed to maintaining a strong partnership under Camp Oakland and its president and CEO and his leadership, and that's Mr. Mark Porter. Mr. Porter has actually worked at Camp Oakland for about 30 years. So he's quite a historian and knows, obviously, a great deal about the camp and a lot of the changes that have gone on through the camp he's been a very significant part of. On this slide, this is the people that are involved in the staff, myself included. Ms. Suter happens to be here this evening, and so does Ms. Schwagel. We're glad that they're here. Our Crossroads staff is very compassionate and very empathetic, and they are extremely patient people. They build strong, positive, professional relationships with their students. The students develop trust and really appreciate their teachers. A lot of times, the students haven't had a lot of success in school, so the type of instruction that they receive from these teachers is extremely beneficial to the students, and they are very appreciative of that. They are very dedicated to educating our students. They're able to teach the students at varying grade levels, and they deliver quality instruction to our students. Recently, one of our Crossroads teachers told me how it really feels good making a difference in our student lives every day. And that's really a profound statement, that every day they feel that they are making, you know, advances in our students' lives. I'm very proud to work with our Crossroads staff.
Good evening. I'm here as Don's wing lady, I should say. I'm Janet Shaw, Executive Director of Innovative and Alternative Programs. So I had the pleasure this year of working with Don and Crossroads, and it's just such an honor and a privilege because, I mean, Don is amazing and all that he's brought to the school. But I started at Crossroads, so it's my home, and I love it. It's, we always said it was the hidden jewel, and I said, who knows, in retirement, one day, I might go back to Crossroads. You never know. It's just such a great place. So it's just been such a pleasure. So for me, you know, Don coming in, we really were focusing on leadership, climate, and culture, just trying to bring some stability and structure to Crossroads. We had a couple rocky years, and we're really committed to improving school culture. Super important with these kids, with all students, right? But, and then the connection with Camp Oakland, the community of Camp Oakland, they're, there's a, you know, a whole group out there that are so dedicated, the therapists and all the folks that help these students, you know, in their personal life where they live on the campus. So that was really important, that we really shore up that commitment to that relationship. So, and my other driving focus, just my personal as a leader in the district, was student, academic, and wellness focus. So living into the continuous school improvement process. It needed some shoring up, and we dove right in, and we brought some of the models from what we used at OVA over to Crossroads, and it's been such a pleasure to work with Don and the team over there, building professional learning community capacity. So there, you know, we brought some of the structures and the documents over, and they were able to make them personal, and you look at the data and look at how, you know, we can bring improvement. And one area that's been, I think we've both been working really hard on are the intervention program. So, and I think Don will hit it a little bit more, but through Star Freckle and the online learning support best practices, because they have a lab, they don't have a lot of electives, and that's super important, that the online learning is done with fidelity and that our students are learning, and they're not just passing through these classes. And the other thing is bringing social, emotional learning and mental health to the forefront, and they do that so well, they, you know, they have good partners. But we are instituting Renaissance Fundamentals, Trails to Wellness, a social-emotional learning curriculum, and Sabers, so the Social, Academic, and Emotional Behavior Risk Screener. So that's just a high-level view, and Don's going to talk a little bit more.
Thank you, Michelle. Just a little bit about our students. Many of our students come, as I mentioned, from different counties throughout, and they live right on campus. So they walk to class, they live right there, they refer to it as their residency or their unit. So most times, they're not late for school, so that's always kind of special. In the morning, we, they do, we have chickens on the grounds that they take care of, and in the morning, we do a pledge allegiance together, and then we start our day. When they do arrive, many of them are not your traditional student. Most of them are very credit deficient. Some may not even have a lot of high school credits. They're typically between the ages of 17 and 18 years old, but we do have students as young as 14 that are in the program. They, many of them have, or all of them have an adjudicated history, and that's why they're there. And so from their education and their experiences, they lack confidence. They're, probably have a lot of absence of role models that they, or trusted adults that they've had. So a lot of them are, again, quite a bit behind. There's a lot of gaps in their learnings. They've had very minimal success in school, and they're overcoming a lot of life, many life challenges. And so our staff does a great job bringing them in and helping them along. Currently, we have 19 students between our female and male populations, and as I mentioned, there's two separate buildings for those, and they are in grades nine to 12. And again, their ages are 14 to 18. In most cases, these students are only with us for six to nine months. So they, they're not with us a great deal of time, and it's difficult on a lot of our staff, because we make great connections and see great progress, and then they leave. And a lot of times, actually having a student leaving Friday, and he started this, well, right at the end of August. So I started in August, and he came in shortly after I did. There's really only two students that are there now that were there in August when I arrived. So most of them have gone through the program already, and you develop relationships, and one key we talk about is that transition back to their, back to their home and to their school, and what are they going to do differently to make sure they're successful? And they've gone through the program of Camp Oakland with counseling and therapy after school, and they've been with us, being educated, and it's, they, they're amazing individuals when they, when they leave us. So it's actually really hard when they leave, because we, you're so, we're so close to them at that point. So they're successful. We've had some, you know, others that actually complete the program, but they don't graduate. So, you know, once they're through with their program, then they go back to their school. Here's just a little information about our, our star screener and freckle. The students are screened when they arrive in reading and math. Usually, we do it right at enrollment and then mid-year, and then we do one at the end of the year. So you can see from their results from mid-October to February. We've had quite a few students do lessons there, and you can see the grades, that, how much they've improved with the instruction of our staff and have done very well in ELA and also in math and their academic success. This slide gives you an idea of where some of them came in in the fall, and then when we took the test in the winter. Now, again, some may have come in in the fall and then left us because they were completing their program, so not everyone would be in here that started in the fall. But as you can see, a lot of them on the far left where their grade levels were with the ELA, and then where they were in the winter, and 63% of our students improved their ELA intervention levels, and 37% stayed at the same. That's in our ELA. In the math, you can see the same type where the students were, where their grade equivalence was when they first arrived, and then where they were in a recent, when we tested them recently. So 40% of the students increased their math, and 60% stayed the same. So they've really done an excellent job with their testing. And just a couple points of pride that I'd like to mention. Recently, our January 20th PD, we celebrated MLK and did restorative practices. We do have done a lot of collaboration, as Michelle has said, working on school improvement. During our early release Wednesdays, we have early release. The high schools do a late start. We do an early release. Not every Wednesday, but many Wednesdays, they're through at 12:35, and then we get into our professional development. We've also used a number of staff members for the, from the OEIC, including Janet. Mr. Matt Santal is here tonight. He's done a lot of computer technology for us. Mr. Neil Peruski's done a lot of data analysis. Caitlin Martin has come over and worked with our staff on online best practices. Amy Greenspan has helped us with GED. Amy writes as our school psychologist, and she's helped. And Ms. Christine Russell is here tonight, and she's worked with PBIS, as Janet has mentioned. Our field trips, we did a couple field trips. Our students had, Camp Oakland had never done field trips, and I wanted to see if we couldn't get off-campus, because they don't get a chance to leave campus. They're not like our traditional students that go home every day or go to their practices or to their plays or their musicals, and they don't get those opportunities. They don't work after school. They don't go to the local store to pick up soda or a bag of chips. They're there. So I really wanted to have them get some outside experience. Excuse me. So we went to the Seven Ponds Nature Center, which is up in Metamora, and many of them had never been there. We went to Blake's Orchard, and we picked pumpkins, and we picked apples, and went on a hayride. And while we were on those rides, I asked, you know, how many of you have had the opportunity to do this before? And no one had. And it just kind of broke my heart to think that those students had never had the opportunity to go to a nature center or to go on to the apple orchard. We actually went and did a field trip at the Township Park, and we did frisbee golf there, and Michelle was a part of that, and she has some stories about vocabulary words that she was working with the students that day. So it's just, it's priceless to see their smiles when they were on field trips like that. The Student of the Month, we select by the staff. These students are selected, and we actually had a couple attend a board meeting back in December. I believe it was December during our Student Recognition Month. We utilize PBIS initiatives, including rewards for students. We've had breakfast and lunches for them. We've had one Crossroads student pass the GED this fall, and one student graduated on January 29th. And I'm kind of proud to say, I believe that's the first Oxford graduate for the year 2025. So it's pretty exciting that we have a graduate already. Couple other points of pride. We've updated our library a little bit, adding some new resources and furniture, and recently held the graduation ceremony in the library. We've placed some new signs around campus and in the building regarding our student-led conferences. We had those in October, and we actually are having tomorrow night is our next student-led conference, and our parents are able to come and attend those conferences. Usually, when our students are with us for six to nine months, they don't have the luxury of going home very much. They have to earn that through their camp and their regulations. So many of them may spend as long as three to four months with us before they get the opportunity to go home. Their parents do get a chance to come and visit them, but that's part of their program that they work with. So we have a very flexible staff. We've completed all of our safety drills, and we do have a tornado drill scheduled during the Severe Weather Awareness Week on March 19th. All of our staff is CPR and AED certified, and they've also participated in the Resiliency Center for Wellness. Just a couple other things. We've had representatives from the Air Force speak to our students. Leslie Fleetmeier from OHS spoke to the students on career cruising and possible future options that are available to them. All of our students took the ASVAB test this fall and got their, and received their results. We recently had an artist working with the students to make their own diary and paint a postcard to be mailed. And last week, I presented to, presented Crossroads to our OHS Leadership Class regarding Charity Week. And today, I was informed that the OHS Leadership Class selected Crossroads for their Charity Week donation. So really, quite an honor, because there is quite a few people that have, were there trying to resent for their groups, and, and I was just honored and thrilled that our students would see the need that our students have for that. So we're very appreciative and grateful for their considerations. Sure. Here's a few pictures of our school. And then also, we have a lake that was, that wasn't recent. Trust me, that was in the fall. But we do have our students, we actually have gone fishing there with them, and these are a couple of our field trips where our students were, were at some of the areas there. So these are a couple of our staff and students again, and also the students that received their Board of Education recognition. So thank you for allowing me to speak today about Crossroads and Camp Oakland, and we really appreciate your support and all you do for our community, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you both. I love hearing about Crossroads. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I have one. For the students that have to stay because of whatever reason, do they have an opportunity to go to church on Sundays? I know that sounds weird.
That's a great question. In case you didn't hear it, they're asking if some of the students have the opportunity to, to go to a church or setting on, on Sunday. And typically, that's always up to the camp. That's not something that we provide. And it's not normal that they all go out, but there might be someone that comes and speaks to them periodically.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure that I heard you correctly. You said all safety drills have been, I guess, taken care of for this year, except one, you said?
Yes. We, we have a tornado drill, and there's a, our Severe Weather Awareness Week is usually a time that we do that one in the spring. Especially with our students, a lot of them leave, and so the ones that we did the tornado drill with in the fall, many of them are not here now. So March 19th was kind of designated as, by the State of Michigan, as the Severe Weather Awareness Week, and so we'll do a tornado drill that day.
We also participate in all of the threat assessment training, suicide assessment training, all the safety. Dr. Williman and I are over there for all, almost all of the meetings I attend. She's there. We have a team. All the drills that are required are done, logged, just like any other school. There might be a few more still to come. I think, right, you have, you'll have a few more, but very much in alignment, lack step with what's expected at any other school in the district. Just because they live in a different environment doesn't mean that we don't align with all the best practices and policy, board policy and procedures.
Yeah, I guess that was kind of my follow-up, was with such high turnover with the students, it must be difficult to ensure that all the students are up on the latest, like, safety protocols and, and things at the school. So I'm sure you guys...
Yeah, that's another great question. And the campus, Camp Oakland, has their own drills that they do as well. So they're not only done in school, but they're done at the residency. So they get them in both areas. As a matter of fact, two weeks ago, we had the Oxford Fire Department out, and we did a drill, an AED drill with our staff, with them, just a couple weeks ago.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll just point out, Dr. Williman reminded me that we also meet with Camp Oakland about the EOP and safety. So that's the, I think, the, that's been so good, is that we have connected the two together. We're, even in our, some of our approaches and how behaviors, we're, we're using the same therapies and safety and all of that. It's all, you know, collaboration is key right now.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, thank you again. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you. We appreciate all the work you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next, we are moving up to the LCA presentation. Ms. Chandler is here.
She's going to be meeting us virtually, and I need to re-log into Zooms. Give me one moment. I apologize.
Understood. Thank you. While we have some downtime, we're just chatting about the fact that they do still do the firewood program there. So all community members looking to buy firewood, don't forget to go visit Crossroads. They do a great job.
Beth, can you hear us?
I can.
Yes.
Hi, everybody.
All right, so...
Am I loud or did it, or was there an intro raging that I need to wait on?
I'm going to introduce you. One second. Okay. John, do you want to come up too, or? Okay. Next on our agenda is Beth Chandler from Lighthouse Connections Academy. She is our kind of liaison between the two. She serves as our Director of Charter Schools for the district, and she and I work alongside with Dr. Milligan and John, as we are the authorizer for that. And some of you returning board members, you're familiar with having to approve the board, and we went through the reauthorization process and all of that fun. But this is our lady behind the scenes. So with our new board, we wanted to familiarize all of you with what Lighthouse Connections Academy is and allow Beth, this time, to be able to speak on that.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to try to share my screen. Now, at the moment, it tells me I can't share, so I'll let somebody very techie try to make that happen. Real briefly, hello to everybody. A few new faces there. I know you haven't, some of you have seen me, some of you have not. Just, has, has anyone had a chance to look through the slide deck that I put in the board or that was put in the board packet? If you haven't, that's fine. I intend it to be a resource for you to be able to go back to. So there are a lot of links in there, and while some of those slides are a little bit wordy, I'm not going to read them to you, so have to worry about that. But okay, looks like I can share. Can everybody see the slide deck now? Okay, perfect, perfect. So as Allison said, thank you, Dr. Williman, we're an authorizer, right? What does that mean? Some of you have an idea of that. You've been through some of this, but some of you, it's kind of a new concept. And so I just want to give you a brief overview. Like I said, leave you with resources that you can dig into a little more on your own if you'd like, and hopefully answer any questions that you might have tonight. So on the, basically, I guess I just went through this introduction, but I've been working with Oxford for the last couple of years, close with Dr. Williman and now Dr. Milligan, and just want you guys to know that there's a lot to be proud of as far as being an authorizer. There are only about 10 public school authorizers in the state. You have universities like CMU and Grand Valley and Fair State that are authorizing schools, but you're one of a, kind of a rare breed, and there are some things to be proud of in the way that Oxford is, is doing their authorizing. So authorizer basics. So a Michigan authorizer is responsible for making sure the academy that they authorize is in compliance with the contract that we've executed with them and with state law. And so this first image, you'll find a link there that'll take you to the Department of Ed's Charter Public Schools page, so that'll give you some basic info. But the document I really like is this overview that the MDE has recently come up with. I think they drafted it in November, and it, it really does a nice job of outlining all the responsibilities and roles of an authorizer of a charter school, and goes into specifics of a cyber charter school, which is what Lighthouse is. So I'm encouraging you to go through those documents if you have curiosity. One of the things the MDE uses to make sure an authorizer is doing what it's supposed to do is this assurance and verification visit. They're on about a three-year cycle. And our last visit at Oxford was in 2024. So I joined in 2022. And so this was my first visit with you guys and it went very well. Dr. Milligan and Dr. Willman were both a part of that visit, but I was able to kind of lead the presentation to the Department of Ed and they were very pleased. They kind of had to nitpick to find things to tell us to improve on. These two links on this slide are going to give you our presentation to the MDE. And this Oxford AV self-rating is going to be a concise kind of listing of all of the indicators that the MDE looks at. There, at this time, there were 22 separate indicators that they kind of audit from things, financial things, how we make sure the academy is, the board is doing things correctly, other compliance, all sorts of compliance and submissions that we track to make sure that our academy that we authorize is doing what it needs to do. So you can look at both the document here and you can click into the self-rating, which shows how we rated ourselves. Then we got MDE feedback after reading, again, on each of these indicators and how we were doing our job. And so you can link to that feedback and our response. It'll give you a lot, maybe more information than you really want. You know, the authorizer's role is not to necessarily micromanage, we're more of a supervisor, an overseer, but it does help to know some details about what's going on. And that's part of my role for you. I go to all the academy board meetings. I visit the school office at least once a year and in constant communication with the academy folks. Pearson, who is the educational service provider and the academy folks specifically. So one of the tools that Allison and I have been bringing on, we've been getting some training in, is something called Epicenter. And so Epicenter is a program that was developed for Michigan authorizers in order to help them keep track of and keep a close eye on all the compliance submissions and items that they are tasked with keeping an eye on. This is a link to the Epicenter website. They are now across the nation being used by authorizers. They were developed for Michigan authorizers specifically, so it's really a good tool for us to be able to keep track of everything that we need to keep track of and kind of keep our, our level of authorizing at the top where it is. The MDE actually used the term gold standard when they were referring to our practices. So I'm proud of that and I think Oxford, you as a board, should be proud of that. Just as an example, here's a screenshot of a compliance center in Epicenter. So this is not interesting to you all, I'm sure, but for me, this gives me a spot to go look and see, are they behind on any submissions? Have they been on time? Have they certified the things they need to certify? So this is a nice dashboard for me to be able to say, ooh, here's something we need to drill them on and really focus on with them. And let's see, I guess, before I go on to talking about the academy itself, does anybody have any questions about all this, this barrage of authorizer information we've gotten so far?
Anybody? Sarah, Beth?
I'm just wondering, are you guys like a private company that works with the state to authorize us to have stuff outside of seated schools?
So the state developed the idea of, again, allowing public schools to have unseated options for, you know, a charter school, authorize a charter school with, you know, not typical in-your-seat options. I am a consultant and I make sure, I come in and make sure you guys are sitting on top of the things the MDE is going to audit you on. Make sure you are keeping track of all these compliance documents and submissions and having your finger on the pulse of the academy's operations, how the board governance is going, all those little details. So that's where I come in. I work for Oxford. I don't work for the state, though I feel like one of my main jobs is to keep a good relationship with the Department of Ed for Oxford so that they are at ease, they are confident in what we're doing. And I feel like we've established that, Dr. Willman and Dr. Milligan were a part of that AV visit. I think they can speak to that as well. But using Epicenter was another way to set the MDE at ease that we are doing a top-notch job at what we're doing. So I don't know if I answered your question. I am not with the state. I don't, I don't do anything to allow you to authorize, but now that you've authorized, I make sure that you guys are in great standing with the Department of Ed.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just had one. If we could go back to the response indicator 1.5, could you just give us a brief overview of how, you know, we're going to, the MDE gave the recommendation, right, in response to special education and IEPs? And that was one that came out in the audit and there was our response. Can you just go over the protocols that are put in place to ensure that we're in compliance with that?
So I will probably defer mainly to the academy because they have all the details of how they do that. I do know that we have a, that the academy has a robust special education program and provision for these students. There are probably, if I read the latest information correctly, there are probably 300 or 400 students with either an IEP or some other disability that are being served that are choosing Lighthouse to be their education provider. So as far as going into details, if you allow me to, I would, I'd like to kind of compile something for you that I can, send me an email to Allison, if that's okay? And then I can get you a more thorough response. I just, most of what has to happen on the response is going to be from the academy level. What we are going to do is the site visit that I do. I go into the academy office and I meet with the school leader, I meet with the principals, special ed director, they're all there. And so those, those opportunities to discuss, hey, how's it going? There is always a special ed report in the, or at least reference to how things are going in the board meetings. So I am there witnessing that and have the opportunity, I have a spot on every agenda for the authorizer report. So I'm able to ask for questions on that. But if you'd like me to kind of get you a bullet list of what we're doing as an authorizer along those lines, I'd be happy to do that through Allison if that works.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, perfect.
Anybody else up till now? No? Okay, we're good to keep moving.
Okay, so one more slide. The academy, let me see if I can, there we go. So Lighthouse Connections Academy. On this slide, you guys have the ability to link to their website. And I encourage you to go explore that to see what they're all about because this is what you guys are making possible by authorizing. This school is run by, managed by Pearson Education, which is a major player in the cyber school world. Very solid and very on top of everything they're supposed to be doing. They're across the country. They have a team dedicated to Michigan. And so they're very, they've been very responsive to me. We were going through the AV process, made a lot of information from them and I had to ask them to start doing some things. So they're very responsive. They're doing a great job, but they aren't, they aren't up there saying, hey, we're doing a great job, leave us alone. They're very open to what we need from them as an authorizer, which is, is great. We have a great relationship with them and by essentially the academy. But the thing I wanted to talk to you about, if you get on the website, you'll be able to see some sample students who go to Lighthouse, who've chosen Lighthouse as their educational option. And, you know, we've seen over the years that being in a seat all day is not a good fit for all kids. And so this option, because you guys authorize Lighthouse, a child who is a competitive dancer, let's say, who has performance and training demands, or a child who is extremely advanced or gifted and kind of needs a different pace or a different challenge, a child who has severe anxiety and just being in a classroom with other kids is an obstacle to getting their education, or a child like we talked about with some form of disability, who many of them are served at Lighthouse. Those kids all deserve, right, a place to get their education where they can focus on their education. And for some of them, that can add a brick and mortar, which is fine. What you guys have done by authorizing this statewide cyber school is, especially during COVID, you've given that option to more than 2,000 students a year across the state. Lighthouse brings in kids from 82 of the 83 counties in Michigan. And like I said, you'll see little snapshots of the kids that are choosing Lighthouse and it's a great fit for them. And it's something that if you weren't doing this, they might not have access to. So I feel like that's kind of the intangible value to what you're doing by authorizing Lighthouse. John Fitzgerald, of course, can speak to the financial benefit to the district and there is one. But that's not, that's not why we're doing this. And if you, you should kind of get the feel from their website, but certainly if you ever had an opportunity to engage with the folks running the school at Lighthouse, it's about the kids. And this is just another way for Oxford to do what's right for kids well beyond your school walls, well beyond your district border. And so you, you really should be commended for taking the initiative to do this, to authorize the statewide cyber school. I will point you to these two links at the bottom. There's the most recent state of the school report that was presented at the December board meeting for Lighthouse. And then school leader Teresa Woods actually gave subcommittee testimony in 2023 to the House in Michigan. And that's pretty powerful. It's the script of it, so it's not her actually speaking, but both those links will help give you a picture of the academy and what it's doing out there in the state for our students and families. So any questions on the academy or anything else?
Any questions or comments? Okay. Well, thank you again for joining us this evening and I appreciate your presentation and all of the links that were very helpful.
My pleasure. I will get to work on a bullet list for you. Allison will see it coming through. I'm not sure which board member you guys are in a small little image on my screen, but I'd like to pass that on to the folks who are interested.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
You too.
Okay. We're going to move into the next agenda item, scheduled public comment. We have three this evening and we will start with Marissa Prince.
Hi, I'm here to speak about the agenda item, which is the letter to Governor Whitmer. So the last meeting, it was also on the agenda and we saw a lot of really strong opinions and some really serious statements made about the content of this letter and how it could adversely affect Oxford's students and staff. So I got the letter. I printed it out at home. It's about half a page. Not, not very long. So I read it. It begins with a little reflect, reflection, some gratitude and then some advocacy and then an offer to meet. It's pretty simple, well-written, straightforward. There's an emphasis on 31AA and 31N funding, which is support for things like paying the salaries of school psychologists, school social workers and school counselors, among other ways to fund school mental health and safety costs. So as someone who chooses to stay involved in the ongoing recovery here and as someone who cares about the safety of my children, but who also really cares about the safety of my children's teachers, work such as this letter is important to me. I care about my children's teachers. I want them to be safe. I don't want to ask them to ever experience something like the shooting again. This type of outreach is not only within the board's scope, it is very relevant to students and staff. As far as its relevance to the efforts for the new strategic plan, I just want to let you know, I will personally reject any district strategy that does not include goals related to student and teacher wellbeing, meaning mental health and a feeling of safety. I'm not, you know, we're not asking you to testify in front of a subcommittee like Lighthouse did. We're asking you to send a half-page letter to the governor to fund mental health and keep this at the forefront. What happened in the last meeting was unbelievable. So I encourage the board to engage in regular ongoing advocacy, which is actually in your operations manual as one of your required roles. There's no shortage of educational work that deserves your time and advocacy. This brief letter should only be a very small part of your collective efforts. And finally, just if any of you are going to be visiting legislators on your own, I think it would be appropriate to just provide a written summary of your visit in open session for transparency since there was a lot of referring to former board members visiting legislators, but we don't really know, you know, what the result of that was. So I support sending this and voting for it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. Move on to Danielle Krosak.
Good evening. I'm speaking as a concerned parent and resident of the Oxford Community School District regarding the conduct of a trustee as it relates to the letter to the governor. I have filed a complaint but felt it was necessary to bring transparency here publicly to the community. I believe this board member has violated ethical standards by failing to collaborate effectively with fellow board members and the community, thereby undermining the integrity and function of the school board. It is a fact, she attended three meetings between January 3rd and February 11th, also attended by the superintendent, at least one administrator, other parents, including myself, and a few other board members. These collaborative discussions included topics of school safety, mental health, resources, financials, communication, and advocacy at the state and federal level. The specific action to revise and draft a letter to the governor advocating for safety legislation, mental health, and the investigation was absolutely discussed at all three meetings. She was well aware of the revised letter and the expected intention to review, but instead was dishonest with the board and this community, pretending not to know about its intention or its origin, creating a spectacle. These actions were calculating and the perception is she aims to destroy the reputation of one or more board members. pretending not to know about its intention or its origin, creating a spectacle. These actions were calculating, and the perception is she aims to destroy the reputation of one or more board members. Page 15 of the Board of Operating Procedures reinforces standards of behavior, including advocacy. Quote, "It is the responsibility of the board members to be advocates, not only for Oxford Community Schools, but for all public education." When a board member fails to uphold these ethical standards, it erodes public trust and negatively impacts the district's ability to provide a quality education. This board member demonstrated concerning behaviors during their election. These violations were raised to the board at the time, and she was given grace. The patterns of violations and unethical behavior is concerning and cannot continue. Per Board Policy 2300, Board Member Conduct, I respectfully request again a review of this matter and ask that the appropriate action be taken, including the removal of committee assignments. The Michigan Association of School Boards promotes code of ethics that includes respect, integrity, commitment to collaboration, and advocacy for all of our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Buck Mir?
Good evening. I hope everybody's enjoying this little heat wave we're getting here. So I'm here to talk about this letter as well. Not, put it in my wife's words, what's the big deal here? Like, that's a great question, Sheri. It's a great question. I don't quite understand what is so controversial about our state investigating this preventable tragic shooting or this letter to the governor. I don't understand why our government sits in silence and chooses to do nothing about the shooting. You are all okay with that? I don't understand why the AG played the board and our community. The AG never needed an invitation to investigate the shooting. She played us. You okay with that? This is what our government does, sits in silence and lets the people fight with each other. Let hate and division rule. You are okay with that? And you choose to sit there and take the bait. All the meantime, they get away with murder and are not accountable for running a better business. They don't care about the kids. I know the argument that you don't want to put staff and teachers through another investigation. What you need to understand is our state government does not recognize the Guidepost investigation. They don't recognize it. There has to be a state-led investigation. That is our best shot at driving change from this tragedy. Throw some mental health stats at you. Nearly 1 in 10 kids was diagnosed with anxiety problems in 2020, a 21% increase from 2019. 44% of high school students reported they persistently felt sad or hopeless during the past year. In Michigan, in the past year, 16.55% of youths ages 12 to 17 suffered from at least one major depressive episode. 59.7% have not received mental health treatment. The data doesn't lie. We are in a mental health crisis. Oxford schools should have been ready for this. So you need to advocate for change. You need to join us in this fight and advocate for change. I want to talk about an example of potential change that happened on November 30th. So this is what we knew about the shooter. One, his SABR assessment, which is a mental health evaluation, was flaming red. Two, he was caught searching bullets on the phone, on his phone. Three, he was caught watching violent videos on his phone. Four, he was sad that his friend moved away. Five, he was sad that his pet died. Six, the picture that he drew, that everybody has seen, blood everywhere, my life is useless, and a picture of the gun. Oxford Community Schools knew guns were in the home, and we know that because of the voicemail that Pam Fine had left with the mother. He quit the bowling team. Shawn Hopkins diagnosed him with suicidal ideation. That's number nine. Number 10, the bird hat incident. That was dismissed as a non-credible threat. Well, we all know now that that was credible. And 11 is the shooter had fetal alcohol syndrome. So Oxford Schools is in the business of kids. It's what they do, it's what, it's what they do, right? On November 30th, the shooter was at the top of the mountain in crisis. Nobody noticed. You're okay with that? So let's talk about the change that can come from this. Using the shooting as an example, those 11 data points that I just talked about. What do you say we put in place a student well-being support software system, a database? And schools are already collecting all kinds of data. You can add well-being surveys into that. You got grades, attendance, disciplinary action, participation in activities. And you have this database. School district hires a well-being coordinator, okay? This well-being coordinator assembles a team with a systematic, data-driven, evidence-based approach to evaluating a student's population's well-being in a tacky way while making interventions personal. Give you an example, we do this with 42 Strong. With one data point, we have the kids take a monthly survey, and we review it in a graph format of the current month with a couple months prior. So we're kind of, we're able to see where a kid is trending, right? And if we see that a kid is continuing to trend downward, we make an intervention. It's simple. And then, and then it starts coming back up again, right? A kid just needed a check-in. So we're, so we're preventing, we're in prevent mode. We're trying to keep kids out of crisis. Schools are in a very unique position. They're a funnel. They're a cornerstone of communities. Schools are not the reason for our mental health crisis. But schools need to adapt and change to help prevent school shootings. They need to join the fight. After they do that, now the schools need to stand up and put pressure on the system to start to solve this well-being issue upstream with preventable measures. The system reacts to tragedies with no focus on preventing them. I'm going to leave you with this. Michigan schools are ranked 42nd out of 50 in the United States and last in our region. So we're not giving our kids a quality education. And we're not providing a safe environment for the kids. November 30th is the proof of that. The data doesn't lie. Stop talking like you're about the kids. The data shows that you are not. You're in a unique position to advocate and drive change from this tragedy. This will be your once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to drive real change in our world. You are part of the system, and every district in our state is waiting for you to stand up and do what's right. Your jobs aren't on the line. Their jobs and their lives are. They can't stand up and speak in fear of retribution. 400,000 kids in the United States have been affected by gun violence. Think about that. That's a staggering number. So we need to get off, you need to get out of the sidelines, join the fight with us, and drive change. Thank you.
Thank you, Buck. Moving into the consent agenda. See, we have minutes from the last board meeting, bills payable, and HR updates. Would anybody like to make a motion? I can move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Can I get support? Mike Whitney, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Superintendent's report, Dr. Milligan.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My report is going to begin with something that is very important. To Buck's point, safety is a critical component that we cannot afford to get wrong in any way, shape, or form. And so one of the things that we have been working very hard on is the Prepare training for any type of crisis that happens in our schools. I had the opportunity to go through this training with Dr. Williman and with Todd Barless. It was very intense, seven hours, large workbook that we went through. And it was all about preparing the team for any type of crisis and to be vigilant about situations that could potentially become a crisis. So I wanted to say, first of all, thank you to Allison and Todd. It was very intensive, but very helpful to think through crisis situations to ensure that we are being very intentional about what we do and how we do it. So currently, Incident Command staff, every school has an Incident Commands Team that are comprised of very specific people with very specific roles in order to coordinate any type of crisis situation. So right now, 98% of our ICS staff are trained. We actually had this training set up months ago, but because of multiple challenges, it had to be rescheduled. But we were able to hold it yesterday. It was really incredible. It was a great opportunity to go through preparation and specifically how we, how that works in tandem with the EOP. The goal of the Prepare training is to build a consistent crisis prevention. That is the key, is prevention through recovery framework. And the goal is that, once you go through this training, everybody on those crisis teams are speaking the same language. So when we call a drill or call a situation by a specific terminology, everybody's on the same page with that. It enhances collaboration and communication. We had several opportunities where we did tabletop activities where a situation, because a crisis could be the milk that we received was spoiled and people are getting sick all over the building. That is a crisis, right? It's not something you necessarily think about as a crisis, but from a school standpoint, there's a lot of people that have to be taken care of immediately. And how do you navigate that? You navigate that through your Incident Command staff, everybody knowing what to do, how to do it in terms of communication, in terms of facilitating of safety and wellness. All of those pieces come together in this type of structure. It connects physical and psychological safety. Obviously, there's the physical safety that we want to be mindful of. But in terms of kids seeing others getting sick, kids being worried, staff being worried, staff being scared, that's a huge psychological component. And so it combines both the physical and psychological training to support, you know, navigating through a crisis. And it provides long-term sustainability. So there's a trained trainer model. So both Allison and Todd are trainers. But we also have, I think Bridget is also a trainer. Is that correct?
For workshop, too.
For workshop, too. So we have, yeah, so we have several other trainers, which is great because the goal is to build capacity within our school district so that we can sustain these initiatives. And then there is a legal requirement to create positive, safe school climates, and this is a part of that initiative. So again, kudos to Allison and Todd. It was an extremely intensive training, but definitely very valuable. And this is what I think was extremely helpful. Obviously, we're educational institutions, but we can't educate if students don't feel physically or psychologically safe. And so the goal of the Prepare training is that everyone involved in a crisis knows what to do, how to do it, and how to support students in a situation so that we can take care of them, we can take care of the staff, and with the ultimate goal of getting back to learning as soon as possible. Here are some responses from participants. They report reduced anxiety and fear associated with school safety planning. It's pretty nerve-wracking to make sure that 400, 500, 1,000 kids are safe, and you want to make sure you get it right. And so having a plan in place can reduce that anxiety. Increased knowledge and confidence associated with emergency operations planning and multi-tier crisis response. It's nice to sit down with colleagues that have similar responsibilities and go through, okay, what, what would we do if this happened? You know, if we had this situation, if we had, you know, X, Y, or Z crisis situation, they handled all different types of scenarios, and we talked as a group. What would we do? How would we handle this? How would we communicate? What would those communications look like? And talk through all the different aspects of that. So it honestly, it does build confidence once you walk through it with your team. So it was really helpful. Balanced, comprehensive approach to crisis preparedness and how important those aspects are. Incident Command System, and again, that's the ICS chart. Everybody has a role. Everyone knows what their role is and how to go about enacting that. And identify key components of effective school emergency operations plan, which is the EOP. EOP for us, that is an incredibly important document, and it's very, very thick, right? And so having time to sit down, go through those resources, collaborate with colleagues to ensure we understand when situations happen, how do we handle them, right? So again, it was, it was a very intense training, but it was extremely helpful, and I'm glad I had that opportunity to go through that with my colleagues. All right, changing gears. We are going to propose tonight to shift some things around. We've been talking about this for some time now. We really want to have more opportunities for our community members, especially at specific schools, to feel comfortable coming in and be a part of the conversations with myself, my team, board members. It can be around the facilities, around safety, around curriculum. Any questions you might have? So we're requesting tonight that the board consider shifting the March 11th meeting to Daniel Axford Elementary. Chad will be doing his presentation that night. So we're asking to push the board meeting to 7 o'clock so that we can have a community meeting from 6 to 7. We will have light refreshments there. Come for the refreshments, stay for the conversation. That's okay with me. So March 11th, we're hoping to switch that. And then April 8th, we have our OHS presentation that evening. And so we're requesting that we do the same, where we shift the time to 7 o'clock so that we can have our community conversations from 6 to 7 at OHS. So hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to discuss that further in the agenda. We have something exciting to talk about. I'm very excited about it. Kristi Smith and colleagues, she's leaned into all sorts of support, including community support, to revamp our website. So it went live end of January?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I wanted to have an opportunity to have Kristi not just talk about it and show some, show some aspects of it, but I also wanted to say thank you. I know how stressful this was, putting this together. Clearly, you know, a department of one, but I appreciate all of your efforts. So I'm going to have Kristi talk a little bit about the website.
Yeah, so I'll just give like a quick tour. So I'm excited about the new website. It's the same URL, so it's oxfordschools.org. And before I jump in, I do just want to thank people who volunteered to help. We had some on the front end giving ideas of layouts that would make more sense or things to avoid or things to do. The company that we were working with, Aptige. Our, the company that we were working with, Aptigie, moved all the data over, and it, we didn't necessarily want all the data over, so we had, there's a lot of organization, broken links, so people were going through suggesting, you know, fixes and things like that, so I really do appreciate. And then, I have other volunteers still waiting that are going to contribute more pictures and things to pretty it up a little more as we go. So, I was hoping actually today to talk a little bit more about the mobile app that's going to come with this, too. It is live. I met with them yesterday, they're like, "Good to go," and then today, they said, "We're getting ready to roll out an update to the app," so maybe like, put the brakes on telling everyone to download it right now. So, as soon as I get the green light on the app, I'll send out a video with instructions and overview. The app is just going to really be the communication tools of our website, and just a super easy to use. You can get notifications sent to your phone, you can click on a calendar link and pop it right into your own calendar. It's just, it will be like a, a very quick thing to just get what's going on in the district. So, if you do have the old Oxford Schools app, you can go ahead and delete that, there's going to be a new one coming up. So, I will jump into the features of the website. Obviously, this is a desktop version. It's also very mobile-friendly. You'll see if you're using it on your phone, it works very well. So, just from the homepage here, if I scroll down, we'll get back up to that fun stuff at the top in a second. But I wanted to point out this live feed. So, one of the things that I heard from a lot of people is that, you know, there's things shared on social media, but I'm not on Facebook, I don't use social media, I prefer not to because there's a lot of drama there. And so, this live feed is basically what we're pushing out to social media, it's coming to our website, and you can get to it without having to have a Facebook account, you can see it without any of the comments or things like that. So, it's just, you know, for example, this post was from yesterday, if you click, you can see the photos larger. So, it's anything like that that we would post to social media, or things that eventually schools will start to push out, will show up there, too. There's a section below called News, and these are a little bit longer stories, like more like articles. Right now, each of the buildings has pretty much the same news stories, but as I get working with the people in the buildings, these will look different depending on, you know, which school site you're on. And then, the district site, we can pull all of those in. The Events section is one that I am actually probably most excited about, because we're going to, we're going to start using this a little bit more, but from the district homepage here, you can say, "See all events," and it has four district calendars that are checked off, and then it also has the ability for you to check specific buildings. So, if you have a student at Clear Lake and OMS, and you want to look at everything together, you can click on those and see them all in one calendar together. So, I do have trainings coming up in early March with the buildings, and we're going to really start getting everything populated in these calendars moving forward. So, let me go back. So, the top of the homepage here, some of the buttons, this was through feedback from surveys and things where, you know, people are saying, "It's really hard to find a staff directory," or "We're always looking for the printable calendars." So, some of those things that were most important to people wound up kind of in more prominent places on the website. Those are also, if you click on Menu at the top, those are in the Site menu here. And so, if you scroll down, one of the things that we were trying to avoid that our last website had was menus nested in menus nested in other menus. So, for the most part, you're not going to see that here. There's a couple with little plus signs that go, you know, one step deeper, but we don't have, you know, three or four different layers here, which is going to make it easier to find things. Also, going to make it easier to find things, this is my maybe second favorite, was Events my favorite? This little magnifying glass in the top is a search feature. So, instead of clicking the menu when you know you're looking for Strategic Plan and having to scroll through, okay, what section is it under? Okay, there it is. I can just go to the magnifying glass and try to type one-handed. Strategic Plan, okay, so then, it comes up with any of these types of things. So, this is an actual webpage that has information on Strategic Plan. If I was looking for a news article, there's one here. The cool thing, too, is it will pull things from our staff directory. So, if I type in Transportation, and if I want just phone numbers and things, like here's the main office, or if I, you know, want the Transportation page, I can click Page, and that brings it up here. So, it really does make it easier to find things very quickly on the website without having to search through menus. Speaking of staff directory, we do have a functional staff directory. If I type in, this is something I wanted to point out to parents, oops, if I type in like Attendance, it will pull up all the different attendance lines at the schools. They're also in the, in the contact information on the school pages, but same thing if you type in, you know, Bus Garage or School Board, you can search that way. You also have the option in our staff directory to, let me boot these, and these, these icons, they're required by the state to be that large, that wasn't a choice I made, but we can kind of move them over. You can select the departments, if you want to see everyone in, you know, associated with Maintenance, or my favorite is the Oxford Wildcat Pack, you can see the staff filtered that way. I think I just have like one or two more things. If you go to the Schools dropdown at the top, you'll see each school site is slightly different, and they have things that are more geared toward parents and students, so they have the Class Link, Extracurriculars, Power Schools, Staff Directory, Supply List. These were things that came up high with parents that they wanted easy access to for each building. Like I said, at the bottom, in the footer, there's an attendance line here with the contact info for the school. And basically, I just want to encourage people to explore. I did add a link at the bottom of each page that says, "If you found an issue, if you have a suggestion, if you click that link, you can bloop it into the little form." And I can't guarantee we're going to make all of the suggested changes, but we definitely take them all into consideration, and if it can make the site better, we're going to, we, me, I'm going to do it. So, it's definitely a work in progress, this is always going to be something that's changing, updating. But yeah, it took a little while to get here, but I'm happy we're here. So, do you have any questions?
Sarah Beth, yeah?
First of all, I want to commend you. That is beautiful. I've been playing around with it a little bit.
Good, thanks.
But it used to be I could pull up the Community Vendors, because even though we homeschool, we still use the public schools, and I highly recommend some of our fun classes that the homeschoolers can take. And so, but when I click on it, it doesn't pull up the vendors. So, I thought it might do that now that you told me, but I just was wondering if that would change.
Yeah, so, OVA has been doing some work on their end that we're going to update, but there is the Info for Future Student site still available.
Okay.
And so, all of the, the different pathways and things for, that have to do with the Community Vendors are still here. I think they're under Academics.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm tech challenged.
No, that's okay.
That's why I thought I better ask.
That's okay. This site still had a couple years left on the contract, and all the links were set up directing here for OVA, you know, marketing efforts and things, so this site's going to be up for a little while longer, that's going to work in conjunction with ours, and eventually, we'll bring it all under one umbrella.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Anybody else? Shane?
Just a quick question regarding the app. I know you said there's a new one that's going to be pushed out soon. I guess it's a two-part question. Do we have an ETA on that? And until it's pushed out, do you still recommend people keeping the original app open, or is it just not usable right now at all?
The original app, so our website and app actually expired already, which was one of the reasons for the big push on this. The app might still be working, the old one, but we haven't really been pushing anything to it. And so, the, the new apps, if you go to the bottom of the website, they're there. If I wanted to go and, let's see if it's blocked, you know, and download the app, I could. I would just, it would update, or I would need to go and update it. They said hopefully by early next week. But it, I mean, if you want to play around with it, they're there, they're working. But I think the big push to get people to download will be probably in about two weeks.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, thank you. I think my favorite is the Event Schedule.
It's going to be super helpful.
Such a big improvement from the last one, and I know you've worked so, so hard on this, and I appreciate everything that you've done with it. It is, it is coming along very nicely, and it is much easier for our families to use, so, thank you again.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Kristi, appreciate that. And that was some feedback that we got about school calendars, if we could do a better job of meshing them, and now that we have a really good way of putting them all in one place, we can see where the conflicts are, so that's going to be a really great tool. So, thank you, Kristi, appreciate that. That was a tremendous amount of work, and will continue to be a tremendous amount of work, so I appreciate you. All right, thanks, Erin. All right, I just wanted to highlight a few things. Beth with Lighthouse Connections, as she talked about being a consultant, she has been outstanding. I had no idea what this was when I got here, and so, I've definitely been brought up to speed. And she talked about the MDE visit, and we did that virtually. That was also a very intense experience, probably about three hours going through. They have very high standards for this type of work, and we went through, and they were very impressed with the partnership. So, that told me that was a high-quality opportunity for students across the state, and we are fortunate to have that partnership. So, this was started back in 2018. As Beth mentioned, we are the authorizer of Lighthouse Academy, and also mentioned was the financial benefit, because we're the pass-through organization, and specifically, it's a fee-based partnership, so we, we receive a fee to support the compliance component throughout, so through the state. And so, it is definitely beneficial for our district. And Oxford was selected over competing districts, so when they were first setting this up, they were looking at a whole bunch of different districts to partner with, and we were the ones that were able to be selected. So, this was a great opportunity. They were going to find somebody, for sure, and I'm glad that, and, you know, we were able to, to get this partnership. And again, to Beth's point, the goal is that all kids need individualized education. That's the reality of it, and there is no one format that works for all kids. So, it's great to be able to provide and support another platform that, as Beth was talking, you know, quite a few students in Michigan take advantage of this, and it's great that they have those options and that we can be a part of it. I want to do some celebrations. We did have National School Counseling Week at the beginning of the month. Thank you to OVA, thank you Janet for sharing these pictures, they're adorable. And I just want, there's a proclamation in the middle, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but guidance counselors are so critical to the work of our schools and the support of our students and our families. So, highlights from the proclamation about school counselors. They help students reach their full potential, are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents. They help families focus on ways to further the academic career and social, emotional development of their children. Counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential. They seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And counselors are an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. So, I just wanted to make sure our counselors know how much we appreciate them. They are truly an asset to our schools, our students, our families. It's also CTE Celebration Month. February is very busy, very busy month. We have an extremely robust CTE Pathways Program at the high school. Anita spoke to it, I think it might have been the last meeting, having the eighth graders come up and visit the high school and all the CTE opportunities. Some of them we may not, you might not even know that we have them, so Business Management, Computer Programming, Radio, TV, and Broadcast Technology, Finance, Health Science, Marketing, does that say Mecca? Mechatronics. Wow, that sounds really cool. Well, that's, thank you. That's robotics, by the way. Engineering, Automotive Technology, Digital Multimedia, Information Resources. So, that's, for a high school, I'm just coming from a large district, if my high school had all of these pathways for students, what a gift, what a gift, right? Because kids have all different types of interests, and to have all of these in one high school is incredible. So, I just want to say congratulations to our CTE teams. Lisa Butts is the CTE Director, and it just provides such great opportunities for students to explore careers, what they're going to consider doing after high school. So, it's, it's really awesome that they have so many options. February was Black History Month, and several of our schools, these are pictures from OES and Lakeville, students learning, celebrating, all about Black history. The purpose of these experiences for students is to encourage critical thinking, learn about contributions of the Black community, acknowledge historical struggles, and strengthen identity and pride. I've talked before how important it is for students to see themselves in the curriculum, so it's great to celebrate and have students see themselves in history, in literature, so great opportunities for kids to learn, and thank you for sharing the photos, I appreciate it. We have some really exciting things going on at our high school. So, this was our signing ceremony, for our winter signing ceremony. These are our students who signed on for colleges that they'll be attending. Drew Caddy, Braden Herring, Luke Johnson, Patrick Wozniak, Dominic Daversa, David Hickson, and Jacob Kamana, all signed going to college. So, that's pretty exciting. More exciting news, our girls bowling, 2025 OAA Champions, very exciting. And then, our boys basketball actually are starting into district championships now, but they went 21 and 1 this season. So, very close to being undefeated, so very proud of our teams. And finally, I, I don't even know what to say about this. It was the most incredible experience, I think, I have had in a theater in a very long time. My husband and I were able to go to the Mary Poppins last weekend. It was just incredible to see the talent and the scenery, just everything, everything. It was a professional show, it was incredible. So, if you haven't had a chance to get tickets, please do. They, the, the students were phenomenal, the set was just visually amazing, and there's acrobatics, they fly. I thought, well, I mean, I see the picture and everything, but they're not really going to do that, are they? Oh, yeah, they do. That's incredible. So, I really encourage everybody, there is a QR code there where you can get tickets, it's super easy to get tickets, just an incredible experience, and I know they would appreciate the support. So, hopefully, you'll have time. There are performances Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and a matinee on Sunday, so lots of options left over. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Would anybody like to ask a question, have a comment?
If we could just circle back real quick to the Prepare, can you give us... can you give us an idea, you know, how many in each building? What is this group consist of? How many are security personnel, part of that, teachers?
Yeah. So it's a part, so each school has its own ICS chart. So there's an incident commander, there's four leaders, but then there's, it's broken down into a chart. It's actually in our EOP. So each school has their own chart that designates all of the roles and responsibilities. We also have a district chart for what everyone's responsible for. I'm the incident commander for the district as a whole. Kristi Smith is the communications commander, so she would be responsible for all communications. So we have a district structure, and then we have a building structure. Everyone serves a role, but there are lead roles that are responsible for navigating the big areas. So again, each school has their ICS chart, and it is in their EOP.
And so that's the group that are all training there?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Well, let's move, well, we'll stay with you, Dr. Milligan, if you want to talk about the field trip, please.
So we have one new field trip. It's not until September, but it is our choir camp for our, I believe it's our high school. Yep. So, yep, it's for, well, middle school and high school. That'll be going to a choir camp, September 12th through the 14th. It is in Fenton, Michigan. And it's for team building, skill building, and performance experience. So that adds, so we had three last time that we're gonna be voting on, so this is our first read for this one.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for this specific one? All right. So we'll plan on voting on it at the next meeting, and then the other three. If there weren't any additional questions, which we had discussed at the last meeting, if anybody is comfortable, we can move into a motion for those three. Sarah, Beth? Oh, you want, you want to read it? Go ahead.
Move to...
Okay, where is that? Just read that. Okay. I move to approve the field trip as presented. Support. Mike Whitney, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, into policy. As you will notice, we did pull one of the two policies, and there was an email that went to everybody explaining that. The ESTA law, there was a change, and so we need to bring that back into Policy Committee. So tonight, we only have the one. But once Trune catches up with everything going on, plus our request, we will have a pile to bring you. For now, unless there's any questions on this one, we can move into a motion.
I can make a motion.
Thank you.
Move to approve the board policies 5409.01 as presented.
Support. Shane, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item is our letter to the governor. And just as a recap from what happened at the last meeting, we left that meeting, sent out an email once again to everybody asking for any potential edits, suggestions. I did receive one, and I spoke with Shane about that, and nobody else had anything to add at that point. I sent it off to our legal counsel, who you've all seen this, I'm just refreshing. We received the email that they approved of the letter. In addition to that, I spoke and had a conversation with David Randles, our lobbyist, and he was very accommodating, very nice gentleman, and spoke about the fact that he supported what we were doing, and he would help us get connected with local legislators in addition, and deliver the letter if we chose to approve it. And he will be following up with me this week on contacts that he believes would come alongside of us. So that was productive as well. And that leads us to today, where we are. And you all have that copy in Board Book. So with that being said, would anybody like to either add to that, elaborate, move to the motion?
Move to approve the letter to Governor Whitmer as presented.
Support. Mike, you want to take that? And discussion?
I just want to say, I appreciate the effort that's gone into this. It's obviously important. Our community has turned out now several times to make sure that they voice their concerns, their opinions. And I think that this is, I think this is just step one of a highly productive move forward.
Well said. Thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to thank you for following up with the lobbyist and doing some digging and research, and making sure that this is something that would be effective communication, if this is the path forward. So I appreciate the work being done to do that. I feel like there was a little confusion as to whether this was gonna be effective. So I'm glad that that now has been clarified. Thank you for sharing that information that was communicated with you. So beyond that, that's all I have.
Of course. And I have not received an email yet, but as you know, once I do from him, I will share with the full board. And we, like you said, Shane, as well, this is just step one. And I really hope that we, as a board, can make an impact on student safety. So, thank you, everybody. Is there any, anything else? Okay. Well, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. As Dr. Milligan mentioned, we are wanting to move the next meeting, March 11th and April 8th. So we, as a board, will need to make motions to do that. They will also change the time from 6:30 to 7:00, allowing us the hour prior to meet with our community members, staff, anybody that wants to come and have dialogue with us. We really appreciate it. I know our community conversations over coffee were really successful last year, and very appreciated. I would love to see more participation, because it's always so beneficial for us, and we love to hear it. So with that, does anybody want to go into a motion, or have anything else? Mike Whitney?
Move to approve changing the location of the March 11th board meeting to Daniel Axford, and the time to 7:00 PM.
Support. Shane, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next one, Mike, can you keep rolling to it?
I'll read it, but it should be OHS. Move to approve changing the location of the April 8th board meeting to OHS, and the time to 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Support. Shane? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Great. I really look forward to that. It's always fun visiting the schools. Yeah, absolutely.
I just have one clarifying question. So the coffee discussions that took place prior to me being on the board, are these meetings from 6:00 to 7:00 in place of, or in addition to? Like, do we plan on having any of those coffee discussions in the future?
I think for now, we are going to see how this goes. This was a recommendation from our Governance Committee. And we'll see if it looks like maybe we need more opportunity. We can, of course, ask our Governance Committee to take a look at that and make suggestions, and then we decide as a board. But for now, I think we'll try this. Just like the coffee ones, we tried different days and times, and kind of got a feel for where it was most effective. And I think that this might be helpful, especially to garner more parent and staff involvement at each school. I think it's a great recommendation, so we'll go with this for now. And if anyone feels that we want to move with more, absolutely.
Okay, great.
I know we're all on the same page with that. The community dialogue is very important to us, and any chance we get for two-way discussions, it's always beneficial. So, thank you for that. All right. Our next item up is Letter of Appreciation. You all have that. That is not publicly facing in Board Book, but board members have seen it. We went with the same process as the other letter. I asked everybody to send in edits, suggestions by a certain time. And now here we are, and this is the draft that we have. So if anybody would like to either say something in addition, or move into a motion? Shane?
Move to approve the letter of appreciation as presented.
Support. All support. And discussion?
I just, again, I mean, kind of echo what was the letter before. I appreciate that this being brought forward by Ann and James. And I appreciate that, because I do think it's very merited. Like, certainly, our staff has been through a lot, and continue to. We see the challenges that are, just in general, across the nation. The challenges that our kids are going through, and trying to teach them, and meet them where they're at. And still do all the other, either administration, or the different, as we've talked about, Trune, getting through all these policies that changes. Just navigating all of that in the background while focusing on our children. It's been, I really, I mean, really appreciate our staff, so I think it's very merited.
Yeah. All right. Well, I absolutely agree. I think that any opportunity that we can have to double down on our support and appreciation for staff is great. And once again, thank you for bringing this up to the board. I think that it is, you know, just one small token of appreciation that we can show to really support our staff and thank them for everything that they do for our children every day. So with that, we can move right into a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. And Dr. Milligan, you will be facilitating getting this out to all of our staff members, so that they will have an opportunity to see what it is we are discussing this evening. Thank you. All right. Next up, the always riveting Mr. Fitzgerald.
So this should take, what, two, three hours? Now, just, tonight is the second reading related to the First Amendment to the General Fund. Last meeting, we went through the presentation. And so at this point, we're at the second reading request and requesting formal approval. Be more than happy to field any last questions related to it.
All right, anybody? Yeah, I think we covered it pretty well last time, so without seeing any, I'll just go ahead and move to approve the Budget Amendment 1 as presented. Can I get support? Mike Whitney, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Unscheduled public comment. Do we have cards? Thank you. Buck Mir.
All right. Just wanted to take a little bit of time to finish up a thought. I kind of lost my composure there. I start, when I start summarizing, when I start summarizing how our government has treated us, and how our school district has treated us, and devalued my son's life, you know, it kind of starts getting to me, so I apologize for that. One thing I wanted to wrap up with on that school safety support software was, you had those 11 data points I was talking about, about the shooter that we knew. And then you add in all this other data. Now, all this stuff's in a database, but let's just say that didn't exist. The other stuff doesn't exist. We can't get it passed because of the red tape BS, the bureaucracy that you all work in, right? But those 11 data points, imagine if all that was in one spot. Think about that. Like, that's how this shooting could have been prevented. Everybody knew stuff, but it wasn't all in one spot for Gestapo to make a decision. That's the type of change I'm talking about. Right? That's, that's simple. This shooting was preventable if all that information was in one spot. It's as simple as that. We don't need to complicate it. This is why an investigation needs to be done. This is why we need to put pressure with this letter on the system. This is the system putting pressure on the system. This is why this needs to happen, because this tragedy was preventable. And I'm never going away. I got to live with this the rest of my life, our family does. So does Steve. So do the Schilling. So do the Baldwin's. And so do all the kids that were in school that day. They're in addition to the 400,000 I mentioned earlier, affected by gun violence. So I'm never going away. I'm gonna be here, and in your ear, nonstop. And I want to be in our government's ear, nonstop, because we have, there has to be accountability to drive the change. So far, no change. And that should be unacceptable three years later. Thank you.
Thank you, Buck. All right. Our next item, closed session. Would anybody like to make a motion? I can. Move to meet in closed session to discuss the Emergency Operation Procedure EOP pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 8K, considering security planning to address existing or potential threats and pursuant to Section 8E to consult with his attorneys regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation. Case number is 24-204988-CK, COA number 373401 pursuant to MCL 15.2688E. Support. Shane, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, no, we need to do a roll call, I'm sorry.
I'm on it.
Mike, you want to do that?
Mr. Gibson? Yes. Mrs. Atchison?
Yes.
Captain Jarni? Mr. Whitney? Mike, yes. President McDonough?
Yes.
All right. It is 8:23. We will move into closed session. All right. It is 9:52, and we are coming out of closed session. As you will see, we have scheduled activities. Any administrative clarification? Dr. Milligan?
I do. I have a quick one. We got information back from MASB Legal Team, Brad Banasik. He, the document that we're using for Q and A, the Google Doc, the concern is that that format could become an OMA violation. It is not right now, but because the format kind of encourages back-and-forth conversation, right? Some person could put a response, somebody else could put something in there. We're gonna shift format to just a Google form. So what will happen is if you have a question, you just put your question in the Google form. You submit it. It turns, it puts it in a spreadsheet, and then you'll have the list of questions and responses, right? So, and it'll be a read-only. You won't be able to add statements to it. So that'll make it real clean. That was his only concern, that the Google Doc was just too open for that. concern, that the Google Doc was just too open for that. So, I just wanted to see if you guys were okay with that. Does that work?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that. I think we all appreciate the digitization of our questions, but of course, we want to focus on staying away from any OMA violations. Good to know that we have not, and we will not be with your new process. So, thank you. And any final board comments? No? Okay. Well, I just want to say I appreciate everyone working together this evening, and we're going to get out of here just before 10:00. So, it'll be an early night. It is 9:54, and this meeting is adjourned.